First deputy chosen by the elected official and they run. So basically she is running the office since Nate is absent, so you don't get none of that.
I'm not worried about it.
The one in charge.
I won't be working enough hours for it to make a difference, but I mean it doesn't matter.
The first deputies are salary.
But I'm my safe bet?
No, they're hourly.
No, they're salary.
They're salary, they're salary.
Salary.
That's personally, isn't really.
Speaking for the recorder's office, I'm fine. My first deputy's going to stay home, she's gonna get paid. My part timer knows she's not gonna get paid because she's part time. I'll come in and check my office and do what I need to do.
I was gonna say, we were talking about the FMLA changing. Valerie had mentioned what happens if somebody has to quarantine. Part of that law with the FMLA changing is that you have to allow two weeks' extra sick time if somebody contracts it or has been exposed to it and has to quarantine. So if, if that law passes, it has, you have to allow them.
If they're actually quarantined.
If they have to isolate because they've been exposed or you contract the virus. That's part of that law, but it hasn't passed yet.
Under a self, is hose quarantine now?
It hasn't passed yet.
It hasn't passed yet.
That's the one that they're fighting over in the senate right now.
But that's something that you're gonna have to be prepared for.
Yes.
So FMLA, anybody over sixty can take it. Can take it. Anybody that has small, or perhaps children, it doesn't matter what their age are. If they're taking, if they live with their elderly people and their parents and they're taking care of them, or if they have a parents that they need to take care of. If you could look around and, I'm just talking.
That's about ninety-nine percent of everybody here.
Yes. Or you have to have underlying, you know, like if you have asthma, you know, more than that, you know, there's a lot. That's just one.
See, I got a white woman that had two heart surgeries and I got a kid on a heart monitor right now because he might have complications.
Well, gentlemen, obviously I think you've understand that this situation is gonna cost some money. There's gonna be a price tag because you're gonna have to pay, so you're gonna have some extra expenses, some extra labor. And, I mean, there's nothing you can do about it. It's unavoidable. But that's what your rainy day fund is for. So, that's, that's what it's for, for a rainy day. Welcome to it.
It's raining cold anyway. I told him years ago that it was storming right now.
No one could have predicted this.
Nobody what?
Nobody could have predicted.
See, I just got a message from the major from Carroll County. She's, she would fall underneath what we do with the court. The major.
Where?
The mayor, the mayor of the sheriff's department.
Alicia Williamson.
I think that's a good legal, this question, question here, although we're citing from the employee manual here and it says, if an inquire, if an employee is required to work at a closed facility. That's a different facility than this facility.
Right, it goes by facility.
The highway department is in a different facility than this facility.
So if we don't allow the hourly people to come in and work, we don't have to pay them extra. It's just the people who are elected officials.
No, elected officials.
They're not our.
Elected officials are getting money.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
That isn't that long.
So like.
Part-time or elected officials.
Well, I'm just saying that what.
Department heads are gonna have to pay them extra. Elected officials, you do not.
So like if Keith has to come in daily to do just an inspection, we have to pay him on top, on top of it. So if he comes in, he gotta be spending an hour, if he comes in an hour a day, that's five hours a week overtime. Then he go, yeah, so he can come in and check the offices, make sure there's nothing leaking, squeaking or burning.
Yeah, it's not really overtime, it's flex time.
Flex time.
And while we're on that subject, we need to have overtime approved, you know, payroll. You know, if they bring it into their, to, on the payroll, it's supposed to be approved by their department heads. So, just to throw that out, I know I've had a couple this last payroll.
Aren't the department heads signing the time card?
Yeah.
Isn't that the rule?
They need to approve that they can have overtime before it's taken.
They need to have a pre-approved before they take overtime. Yeah. It's a little late after the fact, isn't it?
Yes.
What's your view of this plan?
So just keep in mind, the health department is, has to work and we're all hourly. We feel like that, I feel like the hourly employees, whether they're us or anybody else.
Just what it says there, we would have to pay them. And you're the only one in the office, right?
No, there's, there's three people in there besides Valerie and a part timer and everybody's hourly.
But we don't need the health inspector to go out and do his job, do we?
You mean Randy?
Well, I was asked back today and.
And Angie.
That they were talking about if somebody should be inspecting, whether they could that. Expecting to see if they are having done alcohol, tobacco, and alcohol on.
Well, shouldn't that department?
He had decided to do the essential? And he has been there every day but today, and he told us he wasn't coming today, but on the other hand, when you go by the rule, he's sixty-seven, sixty-six, so.
He's seventy.
But he's only twenty-five hours a week, isn't he?
Right.
So he wouldn't fall under that because he's, he's a part timer, so he wouldn't fall under that, that external. You're the only one in the office and the secretary and Angie, right?
Kathy, Kathy Turner, who's been there three weeks, well, not quite three, she just started her third week, let us know by direction.
Do you need her there during this time?
Well, she's doing all of our. Some days we do because she's doing all of the computer work for us while we're taking, fielding all the calls and everything else.
Depends on the flow of traffic.
Yeah, and right now it's been a lot, you know, because it's so up in the air, it's so fluid right now. Things are changing, just like when I mentioned about, you know, with paying and the FMLA, that's on the table. We do try to watch what CDC and the governor's putting out there, but there's all kinds of paperwork that has to be done and she's been helping us with that. So.
If you need her, I say keep, because there's no reason for, for you guys to, you already put in the extra time.
They can, I mean, that's what they're holding. He gave him all the, he gave all his letters.
Basically, that is gonna decide.
Yeah, I do, yeah.
We're not gonna decide. I think probably this should be the policy all the way through, like you said, it's imputational.
Because I'm gonna tell you, if there's people that are staying home, and I don't have anything for one of my girls to do, I'm gonna let her stay home. Even though I'm on the essential list. That's not, it's not fair.
Right, that's what, that's what it is where everybody that produces in the.
Even if that means I have to work extra hours.
That's what I've seen with the other courthouses is they're just kind of, you know, the essential duties are just coming in, getting those things done and then going back home.
That's basically what all the other offices are doing.
And as long as you're dealing with the, the lack of official, it doesn't involve any.
So not these like area plan, he's appointed by a board. He shouldn't even come in at all. Because he's an hourly employee.
I'm not worried about that.
You gonna give it back? Huh? You gonna give it to me?
Uh, no.
Thank you. We mean, we're not worried about getting extra pay for coming in and checking that stuff, no longer than we're gonna be here to check.
So I said.
Yeah, but you really can't do that. You gotta watch, because they could come back ten years from now.
I, I'm just trying, protect yourself. That is true.
You gotta be consistent.
I mean, even if you had assigned something, it's still.
That's why we, that's why I said we just shut it down so for the elected official. It's come back April sixth.
So what are you gonna do if one of us gets sick?
April seventh.
Then your first, April seventh.
Because the urgency thing is till eleven fifty nine. And that may change.
Yeah, that may change. But if the elected official gets sick, then it falls back down on the first deputy. Does any, because if, if you're not here, your first deputy does your job, right?
Yeah, but my first deputy doesn't have a key to get into the building, so she didn't come in anyway. I mean, only certain people have keys to get into this building, so.
And I'm guessing that if right now, like if one of us got sick this week, we've, we've already all been around each other, so I think we'd all have to stay home.
If one of us comes down with a wrist break.
I don't know.
The whole building is gonna have to close anyway, so. We're already bored. Even the health department. They're paying for themselves.
What, what action do we need to take from here on? Can you say and shut it down, Steve? But I don't quite understand what that means, because you've still got emergency management, health department.
Yeah, but you shut it, you just.
You heard the judges say that they're gonna have to come in for hearings.
Right, but that's just essential stuff. I mean, I don't know.
Oh, so we're gonna set it down, other than essential, which.
But then we go back to that.
Come back to this. I think everybody's essential, and I, I go through this proclamation from the governor here, and he's saying we're shutting, shutting down all business and everything except essential. And then the first thing they do is exempt almost everybody as essential. So they're, we're just playing semantic games here for the most part, so what's what right now. I, I think, I'm really wanting to hear what you guys say, and we need to have a specific, what you think we're out of view. Shutting it down, okay. Why are we shutting down? For whom and for how long?
Well, if you're gonna follow the order, it's April sixth, definitely.
If you're April sixth, unless it's continuing on.
And that could change.
Okay, so.
Essential, non-essential. Well, we heard most, most everybody here saying that it's just gonna be the elected officials to come in and do their stuff. So if we shut it down just to the hour and fully, that means everybody needs to pay. I don't wanna do that, page.
Other than emergency management, health department, custodian.
I think, I think if no one, if he comes in once a week to check things out, I mean, what do you think, Keith?
I'm thinking, I mean, you wanna start cleaning, stuff's gonna have to be sanitized. I mean, if it's, I'm not worried about, like everybody else, I'm not worried about, you know, the extra hours and extra pay and all that other stuff. I'm more worried about, you know, you, you know, just as much as I'm, I think about you guys going home, taking this stuff home to your families as I am, you guys bringing it, and me taking it home to mine. So, you know, I mean, so it's gonna be more than just an hour a day, just come in and look stuff over. You know, maybe three days a week or something like that to get stuff caught up. But just to wipe stuff down, you know, if everyone, all the departments, you know, they clean off all their personal items, anything that they touch. You know, which I know is a lot of things, but like they're consistently throughout the day, like their desk, keyboard, stuff like that, stuff that can be really sanitized. You know, knock that stuff out and then just be monitoring, come in, monitor stuff, make sure everything's, nothing's burned to the ground.
I don't wanna be the only one in my department, so it's not like you need to have to come in and clean it. And so, I mean, in fact, I prefer you not come in there, because then it's just me that's in there. I don't have to worry about anybody else coming in to bury anything.
Keith, we're splitting hairs right now. I've got conference calls, I gotta get on, and we need to make a decision. I'm probably speaking completely out of turn, sir, but let's make a decision.
And the decision is between what they want.
That's for you, sir, gentlemen, the commissioners, the executives.
I think that's what we're doing.
I know, sir. We've been meeting this for forty-five minutes.
But that's not your job.
Okay, sir. Thank you. I'll go back to my office.
I, that is something I would love for you to do.
Thank you.
Now, gentlemen, what do you wanna do? By the way.
Yes, sir.
Before you leave, I would, we have people that work for us that are highly trained and educated. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Engineer.
Yes, sir.
Doctor.
Yes, sir.
I've never had one of them insubordinate. You are in insubordination.
How am I insubordinated, sir?
Because you, okay, whenever you walk out of the door, the first thing you do is tell everybody, boy, those commissioners, they're stupid. They're not doing anything. I can't get them to move.
I haven't said you're stupid, sir.
Huh?
I have not said you're stupid.
You have.
I have asked for you guys to make a decision.
This time you did. I'm talking about past times of when you were.
No more, no more.
What?
This, we, you need to do that, not in the public media.
Yes, I do need to do it in public media. When he insults you, and when he insults you, I don't like that. And he does it constantly, every day.
You have a really tough job, guys. I feel for you. I wouldn't want to be in your seat right now.
I don't feel sorry for me, but I appreciate your constant concern.
I don't know, perfectly, we make mistakes, but.
Steve has said shut it down, and I'm, I'm not opposed to that, as long as I know what we're shutting down.
Right, that's what we need to decide now.
That's right.
So the health department, EMA guy needs to be here because they're both really important to the county. Keith is willing to come in, so that'd be the three, three departments that need to come in.
Beth has to pay the people, payroll.
That has to pay people. But they're, but they're gonna come in and just check their offices and do what they need to do, and that's what they're already saying that's what they're gonna do. Is that what I'm understanding from you two ladies back here?
We can still be gloves and the elected officials can still come and go. We do that on the weekends and weekends.
Right. Then the judges are gonna do their thing upstairs if they need to.
And if there's a day that, you know, that you guys have stuff going on that I can adjust my schedule, have that one of my cleaning days, if you guys have something coming in or whatever, I can meet them at the door, you know, that way you don't have to come in or, you know, waste your time, or, you know. That's, I'm just saying. We want to do that, if you guys have something to look at.
Let me say that again, okay.
I'm just saying that if, if I can adjust my schedule for like a cleaning day, so if I say I'm gonna come in and clean, you know, Monday and Wednesday, or however, whatever it may be, and you say, well, you know, I have stuff coming in that, but I, I wanna stay at home or I'm not feeling that well, I can accommodate that to come in since, you know, I'm coming in to clean or, you know, I'm sure the health department, if you let them know. So I gotta have to go through their barricade downstairs anyway, so, you know. But I'm just saying, I, I can, I can help out with that too.
That's very, that's very good. I, I appreciate that.
Can I say something?
Yes.
You're talking about different people.
Something got in the hotbed. Okay, now.
We're talking about different people coming in that have a key, I just, Beth and I talked once, Keith and I talked once. People who come in with their key have to remember, they've gotta do something to the door, or anybody can walk up and turn the latch and come in. I found two, opened today, Kevin came, two, the east one and the north one.
Well, they're not, they're not locking it properly when they come in.
When you come in, if you don't turn that key back around to a direct click, the next person behind you, if they know it, they just turn that knob and they can walk right in, anytime of day or night.
Yeah, so if you put your key into the lock, turn it to the left, it unlocks the latch to open the door. But once you open the door, you, you have to turn the key all the way to the right, to the click, and then you're good.
I want you to show me that after we're done here, so I can sure.
Beth and I talked about it.
And it, it happened on Monday and there was, yeah.
I saw it happen myself today.
Well, and, and Angie and I came back from Dr. Dutter's office and I had my key already put in.
So somebody is not treating it properly, so I keep waiting.
Well, that might be me, because I left through the east door when I went to lunch.
It was the north one that I saw. He was listening, I saw.
Yeah, that's the one that was recorded last night.
Yes, you need, I'm gonna take off. Do you need anything else for me?
No, no, we appreciate your input. Thank you for keeping an early rule.
Today it was the north and east, and yesterday, I can't remember, the south door was one day. So I don't know, but I.
I'll show anybody right after this meeting if they wanna see.
Well, actually, you weren't supposed to be using your keys. At all.
You are.
My concern is, you know, after the two weeks or whatever we do that, unless the back wall will be.
It's gonna be back.
There was supposed to be somebody there.
We just gotta hope everybody likes to slow down.
If we're, yeah, that's the point, and I, I drove down, I mean, or, traffic's like usual. Not like, not like business as usual.
I was just, I come out here, I didn't notice any lack of traffic on.
I was working this morning, there's only three cars on the highway. Normally, there's fifteen to twenty, wasn't it?
It wasn't, at that time, it wasn't.
And it's good, meaning after tonight, it seems to slow down even more because of the order of everything.
It takes place tonight at eleven fifty-five. This whole non-essential thing, though, and I'm sorry to be leaders of all, but, you know, if you've got a family and kids to feed in there, it's pretty darn essential to you.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So, because somebody in the government office in Indianapolis says you're non-essential, you might have a completely different opinion of that. Okay, so I'm, I'm up for entertaining any motions that we have here, how we're gonna handle it.
So what would you, what's your thought, Bill?
I don't have.
I mean, you're the, you've always been here the longest.
I've been here longer, but I'm not any above you guys. You guys.
That's something we've never faced before.
Yes, none of us have been here before, so. My, my big expertise is on this is closing courthouse a couple times in the snow is real bad. That's not what we're talking about.
And they were talking about people's lives that could get dis.
That's what that was written for.
That's one, it wasn't put in here for something like this.
Wait a minute, you're saying that that section is.
Yeah, but it's basically on a snow day.
I think it's because of the snow days, you know. But then on the other hand, we've also had people come in here and they were told not to. Then. Then you don't pay them, so, I don't know.
I mean, the less people's in here, the less we're gonna contract it and they're gonna take on. You already had two or three other elected officials say that.
If you just sort of pull the traffic, you.
And if we, if we don't let the hourly people in, they're gonna get paid, so there's nobody gonna be missing out their money. I mean, it's still gonna be the same salary no matter what, if they're here or not, they're gonna be paid, so we don't, the budget, I don't think it'll be hurt that way. Do you think that? I mean, you're either here or home for the five days, ten days, whatever this is gonna end up being. So, or. Yeah, it'd be the same, so we're really not hurting the county by paying people extra unless they have to come in and.
Well, I didn't even thought that, I didn't say extra, I didn't include it.
But I think the point was made very well, but that's what the rainy day fund is for.
Right, but, you know, somebody that got back five years ago, five years from now and say, hey, I was mad and this is what I want. Because I don't know what the statute of limitation is on that. So, I mean, I make a motion, just elected officials come in and check their offices, Keith comes in and does what he thinks he needs to do. The health department run is normal, and the EMA rooms is normal. That's my motion.
All right, I understand, so, hang on. Say that again.
Elected officials come in, check their offices. Keith comes in and does what he needs to do. Health department and EMA work normal shift, then they'll have to figure out what room to do.
Well, I work on a grant, so it doesn't affect me.
So it's just the two or three that's in the office, then we'll have to. The EMA. Health department. And they can go off what Dr. Dutter decides to do for their office. Then he's basically in charge of it. So if you don't do the secondary that day, center of, there's one less room, that'd be my suggestion.
I'd like for you to probably put hours on, put this down, and I'll come in, hours.
Good night, Keith. I'll let you decide.
If it's pretty much a banquet building, can't imagine that actually being on site would be more than twenty or so actual work hours. I mean, anything that's.
What, what, I mean, what's the hours concerned, he's not gonna work overtime.
So he can get paid next year, so.
According to our policy, yes, yeah.
So, there should be a limit there.
If I have to take anything, I'll take it as a flex.
There you go. Because he's new, he's gonna need hours anyway, he can get up to about forty hours. I think it's forty hours.
Say that again, I didn't get it.
Flex time, some people are only allowed to go up to so many hours. I think it's forty hours. I think it's forty hours in emergency services.
I found what you were saying, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Because he really don't have much breakage on it. And I trust him doing his hours. I'll make sure I don't go over that.
What'd you say?
Forty hours flex. I trust him on what he does, on his hours. He comes in, works five hours and then goes home. I think it's forty hours.
I know, Beth, that I've been through this, I don't know how many times, but my brain's not working quite right. Define for me flex hours.
It's, if you work overtime, we don't get paid overtime.
Right.
We get flex time. A lot of us, I mean, the elected officials don't.
Right.
But they get flex time. So it's just, what that is, is they're supposed to take that flex time within the same pay period.
That's where.
A lot of.
But, but we've been authorized to carry over.
A lot of department heads do not enforce that, because.
Then it becomes comp time, right?
No.
I mean, what's the difference between comp and flex?
I mean.
I can't take it as comp.
It's flex time, basically. What you, it's about basically the same thing. Let's say we're like Friday, the last day of the table, okay? And then something happens and there's a major victim here and he works ten hours at night. You can't make that up in that same pay period, so it's carried over and he just uses it. With him being new and on the, like, vacation right now, he can use it for help with his pain or have a sick day.
And also with that, so like it's the end of the pay period, if they come, correct me if I'm wrong, so if you worked five hours and you don't get to take it back, those hours in that pay period, you get time and a half of those hours, right? You get time and a half after, you can't use it in that same pay period, so like if you worked five, you would get like seven and a half hours?
No, you get the same amount. Plus, if he, if he works forty hours, so anything over the forty hours, it will be, for like, one of my girls who works thirty-six, they have to work up to forty hours before they can get flex time, or, I don't know, time and a half. Which would be still flex time.
So it might be prudent for you to make a motion to extend the length of period of time that an employee can carry their flex time to six months or whatever, given the certain situation.
I, I think we just let that happen, department heads, because some of them.
Yeah, because we are his department head.
Well, the thing is, some of us are so shortly staffed that you can't, you gotta watch who you let go, when you don't let go, and who's gonna be there, I mean.
Yeah, but during these two weeks, I think we'll be okay. Time will be okay. As long as the elected officials are coming in doing their thing, health department does their thing under the doctrine.
So they shall be additionally comp safe for all such hours where normal rate of pay.
Normal rate of pay, that changes.
So like the health department, could they get the time that they're working, it could be flex time that they can take off of the later time? Is that what you mean?
That's clear.
No, a lot of times it'd be comp time. If you're hourly, then it's best.
No, it's, it's been changed to flex.
It's flex time, it's flex time now. It's the same, it's the same thing, but it's flex time and you're not supposed to get paid for it.
So if they work forty hours, they don't need to get forty hours of comp time.
Please grant, the rest of us are hourly and mine doesn't end at five o'clock or if I walk out the door at four, because I get checked. How many text messages or emails did we get today from our own phone? One hundred and forty-three came in online. And it doesn't end there, it can't go into the night, and I don't know, could Catherine would not get those.
Okay, so I got a motion on the floor from Steve, and I need to make sure I've got it right, Steve. I think it's a good motion. We're gonna close the courthouse, except for elected officials and the health department, emergency management, custodians down. Just one custodian.
Just one.
Is that right?
And the courts.
You have to, you have to through the courts or?
Well, the courts will do their own thing anyway.
And they're elected too. Okay, so I got a motion and a second. Okay, yeah, there's.
Yeah, so do we need to meet on the sixth? Yeah, um, so do we need to meet on the sixth? So we're actually closed that day, so we need, so we need to move, we need to move our commissioner meeting to the seventh, after this motion.
It would?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're saying till April sixth, too?
Till April sixth, then we have to.
It will be closed like April sixth. And we got that all down there?
Steve made a motion, the elected officials will work, check their offices, and, and E M A, and health, and the custodian, one custodian will meet, will be working, Dr. Dutter will decide on the health department. To April the sixth by the governor's order, so, I, I'll fix it.
Is that a fair rule?
Yep.
I'll call for a motion, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Now I need to make a motion, to move the commissioner meeting from April sixth to April seventh, at nine a m. Can't have a meeting closed.
Now, what are you gonna do with the governor, extend him beyond April sixth, which is, I do like.
Then we'll have to have a, we'll have to deal with it then, talk to the attorney, see what we need to do.
Ted has it, go on, April seventh?
If he had something that would fit between, for people available, but if it's this, sorry, Ted, but if it's this program, I'm not too sure, it's, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't like that phone thing.
There he is, green. Yeah, I think so, too.
I'm okay on the seventh.
Okay, he's okay on the seventh.
Okay, so your motion is, we will meet, regular commissioner meeting will be moved to the seventh, at nine a m. Second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. And we need another motion, you have one of us, well, we already did authorization, but emergencies, if we can't get hold of each other because of the open door law, we go through Ted? To send it out?
But if it's an emergency, I've always told, were told that you could talk to the other two, that's the. That's just an old rule, I don't know, she's shaking her head now, but other counties do it, so, I don't know.
Do I know I called Ted?
Talk to Ted, right, Ted?
We got the guy on.
Right, Ted?
Yep, uh, I will send a, a draft of an executive order that I will give a bet to incorporate, uh, what your decision was today into the executive order, but I'll, I'll send that the next day or so.
Okay, I have a question, when does this start, because nobody, I mean, how would, what?
When does it, when does your motion start, if we're.
Tomorrow morning, people report to work.
Eight o'clock, drive around, go home.
Yeah, that, the governor's order.
We should say a midline, cause that's what the governor's watching, it's been like twice.
Okay, so eleven fifty-nine P M?
Are you making your motion?
Yeah, I made a motion, I added the eleven fifty-nine P M is first.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What was your next thing, Ben?
Okay.
I just need to go through something, and I'll study it.
Okay, I still.
If the governor stands. Uh, the, the executive order from this meeting will, will make it so it, it's co-termus, so it's the same as the governor's order, cause the governor's order said that it'll give people the sixth to eleven fifty-nine, unless it's extended or modified. So that's why it's good to have your meeting on the seventh, uh, but, but if the governor jumps in Saturday or Sunday, it's, it steps it, then your order will continue. As long as the governor's order goes, unless it's changed significantly, that requires you to do something else.
Then how do we have our meeting to decide?
Well, I think that's what he's saying, change your order, to say that it's gonna coincide with the governor's.
And we still need to meet, then.
No.
Not, we wouldn't either, would we?
Is Ted saying that we need to change our motion, so that it coincides with the governor's order?
That's how Keith's gonna.
No, no, cause it still follows under.
He's gonna write it, definitely. You're gonna write it out, right?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes, huh? The time you know will be the same as what the governor's order is.
It'll coincide with the governor's order.
Okay. What do we do about claims, gentlemen, that I laid back here?
I signed them.
Okay, do we?
And we already voted to have you or me, but we never decided to.
But we need your motion, I think, to do it now that we're all together.
You go, Mel, Mel, come in and do those?
Do your claims?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a stuff a bit.
I'll make a motion for, uh, bill, chairman, someone, come in and sign claims without the other two.
I have one more in there that they later will ask, but we left mine, and it's like, so.
Thank you.
Don't we need a motion, thank you all for being here.
We need a motion, if you sign it, we.
Yeah, we need a motion, we all.
We can sign it in the next meeting. Well, we are assigned those, but future.
Didn't make a motion, sorry.
You made a motion.
Right, just you only. Is that, is that right?
I'll make a motion.
I signed that motion, we approved all we did.
Okay, you'll sign it?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay healthy. Word knows my brain's shattered. Oh, what's at the jury?
Hey, there you go. We got another claim, okay?
Yes. Yes?
Wisher to bring his claim, knock it.
Yes, they made a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
And now he's approving another claim.
I did say.
We didn't.
Second, all in favor, please say aye. Okay?
We are done.
Well, we have, we have a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion this last day, we're doing the last claim.
Okay, now your motion.
All right, thank you.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Oh, here's your pencil.
Oh, if it's in that one.
Right, Dylan, you need to go, you're dead. Um, my, no, okay, but boy, I had to put on my partner, cause this has been racing.
Battle with the car?
Yeah, he's having, he's racing, he's racing.
Which is what?
Going up like a hundred thirty, hundred forty beats.
Huh? I don't have him on email.
So he's been wearing a monitor?
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, I don't care, I don't need him right this minute, I mean, it's up to you, you know, you don't have to do him right now.